Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Berlin Select Board Meeting for what is it Monday, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Happy Spring. It was even a nice day out today, too. Meetings of the Berlin Select Board are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Access Channel and YouTube. Let's see, your voice, your image, and your telephone number may be recorded for this meeting. I it's seven oh-two. I call this meeting to order, and let's just jump right into approval of minutes.
Um, I will make a motion to approve um some adjusted minutes, I I believe. Uh, for March thirteenth, open session meeting minutes uh with the change that um. Fiancee Committee Chair Scott Schultz should be changed to Finance Committee Chair Scott Schultz. That's the only thing I found. Otherwise, it looks good. Thank you, Mary.
Uh, Peg's muted.
There you go. I said I'll second it, but I have a question clarification. Um, yeah, my crap by the way. Even when we talked about giving rec. An additional five grand, you know, they asked for twenty-five. We were going to give him thirty. Was that thirty inclusive of the fifteen that they asked for? Or was that five just in case the bill is for like twenty-seven dollar twenty-seven grand? So we didn't have to go back and forth.
The the five was just in case they came in a little bit more because we had previously approved the fifteen hundred earlier in the meeting.
Okay, all right. I wasn't sure because I know that we had approved it, but then when we went over it, Scott, you mentioned that, well, maybe if they don't use it, then we can use that. So I just wanted to clarify.
I I was corrected because I would I I was wrong, so.
Oh, okay.
So they have both the fifteen hundred dollars and the thirty thousand dollars for the tennis courts.
Yep, all right. I'm good.
Uh, then I think we're ready to vote. Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Stone Eye.
Um, if there is anyone in the audience who has a general public comment, please raise your hand. And while you're doing that, uh, we will bring forward our first hearing presenter for tonight, Wayne Textera for the CPAC Capital Planning Advisory Committee.
Yeah. Hello. Are you? Good. I have no idea how to share my camera on here, so sorry. I'm used to this. Wait a minute. There we go. Can't detect my camera. Not sure. So you're not gonna you get my voice, not my face, unfortunately. Sorry about that.
We'll make it work.
Technology. I don't usually use the laptop for that. So um, do you want me to share my screen that I have the um?
Uh, sure.
Okay, see if I can make it work. Can you see that?
I can see that, yeah.
Great. So um, so thanks for having me um to talk a little bit about the as a representative of the Community Preservation Act Committee. Um, and our plan. So, you know, I'm not going to go through it in detail. That's why it's there. But I think, you know, the the goal of um the committee wanted me to talk to the select board is um to just kind of cover the information. These are the members of our our committee. Um, and I think, you know, there's obviously a lot of pages here, and you know, for those that happen to see this, it just will maybe give them a little overview of um you know, what we're doing. And the plan is the goal of the plan is to sort of outline um to recap what the Community Preservation Act is, um, how the committee works. Um, and see through the table contents. All that information is there. Um, in the introduction, it's giving basically a a layout of, you know, what CPAC CPA is. Um, and basically that the plan is the process by which um our our committee uh administers the plan. Um, and so basically, it's this is an informational document, as it says, for the citizens of the town, and it's a guideline for applicants also that are seeking funding through CPAC through the CPA. Um, and it's a blueprint to sort of, you know, set some groundwork, be groundwork, because this is still relatively new, only a few years old. And so we're trying to, you know, set some consistency. Um. As far as, you know, the Community Preservation Act, basically, as a reminder, allows Massachusetts cities and towns to raise money through a surcharge um of up to three percent on real estate tax levy and on real real property. Um, in Berlin had voted or adopted uh the Community Preservation Act, and we apply a three percent surcharge on local property tax bills um to set aside uh funds uh for CPA. Um, and the the part of the reason that we had um set that surcharge um at three percent was that the state uh does give give funds. I'm not less than five percent, not more than a hundred percent um based on other other funding uh to help match and increase the amount of funds that the town has available for Community Preservation Act projects. Um, so I think you know, what's important to note is in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, our CPA match um was a hundred percent resulting in in the town getting two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars from the state. So basically doubling doubling our money that we have to spend on projects. Again, this is just to in this part of the report plan, we're just talking about, you know, how we're responsible as CPAC uh for maintaining the plan, reviewing the projects, uh, keeping records and reporting uh on our budget. Um, for those that aren't familiar, and I'm still learning because I'm relatively new to the to the commit to the board, to the committee. And um so basically, ten percent of CPA funds that we have that we get each year are spent or reserved for each of the three purposes, which is open space and recreation, historic uh resources or affordable housing. And then the remainder of the funds um can be um basically banked to be used at the committees at the town's discretion, based on the committee's recommendations uh for different types of projects. But it does also allow us to reserve a portion for um administrative activities and such. So I'm not going to go through a lot of the deep further detail there. Um. Again, the purpose of this whole plan is to just kind of identify, you know, what our goals are, you know, the the CPAC committee is definitely aware of, you know, what the other planning um that has occurred in town, uh, looking at the master plan, open space recreational plan, um, housing strategy plans. And so those are all things that are considered, you know, as we're, you know, looking at the proposals that come forward. Um. And further in for for anybody that's interested, you know, in considering, you know, what types of projects CPAC can do, you know, I just recommend that they, you know, read through this proposed this plan. Um, it it does a pretty good job of outlining the process about um, you know, how we approve CPA projects, how the CPAC committee will will uh review them um when we receive receive them. It's really clear and showing that we're we're not the catalyst for the project. We're a catalyst. We're not the initiator. We're not the developer. Um, you know, and and as we look at projects, our goal is always to, you know, if we can meet multiple um goals with one project, that's ideal for us. Um. Again, this part of the plan aligns that, you know, we're we're only looking, there are only certain types of pro on proposals and projects that are um can be used based on the legislation. And these are what they are. The uh basically, you know, acquisition, creation, preservation of open space, same thing for land or um land for recreation, recreation leaves, can't speak. Uh, preservation, rehabilitation, acquisition of historic resources um uh create for community, creating community housing. Um, and then, you know, re rehabilitation and restoration of open space. Um. As far as, you know, the way we structured it, we wanted to make it really easy as a document for the for people to use and understand like what where their CPA um money is going. So this is just a recap chart of, you know, the funds that have been raised through the surcharge, how much the state has matched. So it just demonstrates the total revenue that we've had to spend. So it's been over over a million dollars. Uh, actually, one point two five, basically, a little bit more than that. These are the projects that have been approved. Um, and this is in it also will show in the plan, the progress, you know, where they are in progress, partially complete. Um, so most of them are in progress or on the way to be completed. And and we we outlined it again to be like which category, what the project is, the designation, uh, the description, excuse me, the applicant, you know, who who applied for it, what the funding was and how it went, because it gets a little bit confusing as far as um, you know, which fund and that. So we try to make sure we're clear on that. And then the rest of the plan, for those who are interested in buy each of the three areas, so historic preservation, and this has information uh in each section, talking about the goals uh for historic preservation. And then again, recapping again. So if that's your interest is historic use of uh preservation, use of CPAC funds, you can read it in that section in these particular projects that are underway. Same thing with open space. What the goals are. And yeah, Horseshoe Pond uh was a was a big use of the funds. And so again, and it talks about how the funds were so undesigned funds plus open space uh funds. So you get a sense for the funding, recreation, and their objectives and goals for recreation uh in in that area. And these are the particular uh programs that have been uh projects that have been approved so far and that are under underway. Um, community housing uh where obviously is a town in the process of um getting getting those committees uh together and having a housing partnership. I don't know if that's the right term, but so right now there isn't anything specific. Um, it's been appropriate, uh, has been approved at this point, but that doesn't mean it's not going to happen. Um, and then it's just a summary. So again, I'm not, I didn't want everybody to think reading it verbatim, but you know, this year we have um three, three, three projects that are um being considered um for town for town meeting approval this year. So we're still finalizing that information and hopefully that's a, if you have any questions or does this helpful? Hope it's helpful.
Uh, Peg, go ahead.
So Wayne, apologies if I've missed this somewhere um in here. But let's say that for tax purposes, we'll do easy math. For tax purposes, you think that you're going to get twelve dollars back from the town, right? Um, from from the taxes from everybody. So you have three projects. But we'll we'll do small, small is easy. We'll do three projects. Each project is worth four dollars. They've all asked for four dollars across the board. So there's our twelve. What happens in the event where taxes don't come back as you think? So you will only get eleven dollars. So what happens to those three projects? Do two of them go through? One waits? Does the money get reallocated so that equals eleven dollars? I I just wanted to be sure that I understood.
What?
Wait, I can take that if we can.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it's 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 not based on what's going to come through. It's based on, I believe, what does actually come through. It's all certified. So it all is certified. So I mean, that's part of the challenge that we're having right now is everything has to get certified. And um, again, my my, I'm learning as I go, but like even the funds that aren't used, like the state reimbursement that we're going to get because of Horseshoe Pond, like even though we're going to get that money, it was appropriated. And we're going to get a reimbursement because of that. We can't, we not, we can't use that until it's certified. So it almost takes like a whole cycle um before those funds are available again. So it's it's not something that you can sort of spend without knowing at all. All those funds are certified in advance. And um, oh, I should have, hang on one second. Um. Share this again. This part here. Going way back to the beginning that talks about the funding peg. You can basically see how here's what, you know, the surcharge was that was certified and the and the and the match comes in the following year. So it's so it's not like it's not like you're anticipating a match of anything. It's all, it's all certified. So we're not, we're not spending based on an estimate. We're spending based on actuals.
All right. So it's the local surcharge. So that's where my twelve dollars would show up, would be under local surcharge, and you can't allocate funds until it's verified that you truly have twelve dollars. You don't have eleven dollars and fifty cents. You have twelve.
Right. At town meeting, you can only vote on things that are actually already in the bank account.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure I was looking for it. I'm like, I know I've heard it. I know I've seen it. I can't find it. So I know Wayne's coming. Uh, welcome him to Peg's questions and just ask, boom, done. Thank you.
And then wait, I thought the three percent surcharge was like after the first hundred thousand. So the first hundred thousand evaluation of the house is not included, the three percent surcharge.
Um, I don't know the answer to that. So I can, I can, I'm making note of that. I'm going to find out. And if 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 somehow we've misstated it, we'll make sure we correct it.
Yeah.
So it's the three percent.
Yeah.
After the after the first hundred. So it's three percent over a hundred.
I hope the state allows us to do that and make it a little bit more progressive of a tax.
Um, I'm going to find out. I haven't heard that. Like I said, I'm still learning. So but hopefully, you know, I think we've we spent a lot of time trying to um you know, format, format the plan so that it's logical, that it's a useful document, and it'll help, you know, keep track of, you know, where the where the projects are so that they don't get lost sight of overtime. And um, now I think we're off to a good start. I think the committee is pretty proud of the stuff and that we've been doing and, you know, some good proposals this year, so.
So.
That's all I have.
Yeah, great. Chris, go ahead, Chris.
So I I really find this a very interesting document, and I think the residents of Berlin would too. Um, are, do you have any plans to distribute it, for example, at town meeting, couple of hard copies?
Um, hasn't been discussed. I can find out. I mean, it is on the website. Um, so that people can access it that way. But I can, I can talk to the committee of our meeting tomorrow and and find out if we have some, if we can make some hard copies for it available. Sure.
Okay, that'd be great.
For those that are not, for those that are not, uh, is internet.
Right.
You know, into it.
Yeah, I mean, maybe maybe have a in, you know, some note somewhere that this is the login or this is how you get to it online. And if you don't want to do that, then you can take a copy or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's eighteen pages. So yeah, so.
Right.
But we can make some copies, I'm sure.
Okay.
We can.
Thank you.
Anything like that. You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, I think this is great, and I'm glad you got a chance to explain it. Thanks, Wayne.
All right. Thanks. Have a great night, everybody.
You too.
Uh, I think next on our agenda is Fred's monthly report. I think he's as happy as we are that it is not snowing. So I think we've had storms near his last couple of reports. Or plans a couple of.
Good evening. Hi. I'm trying to make this short, uh, because we're two months behind, but uh for February, um. Uh, there was minor routine uh truck equipment maintenance that that got done uh with ongoing potholes. Um, we were able to get out and get more trees cut. Um, and then for snow and ice events, we had ten days or nights where we had to deal with the winter remix. Uh, first time we had to put the plows on was actually on the twenty-third, and that's only because we had three inches of slushy mix, no real snow to speak of. Uh, for the public buildings, um, I met with a gentleman from Tech Roof uh to look at the eighteen seventy roof. Um, and as luck has it, Wednesday, uh, this week, he's going to be coming in, uh, providing the weather's good to start the repairs of the slate. Um, so that'll be all sealed up. Uh, the elevator at the Public Safety Building did pass inspection. Uh, we're still waiting on our appointment for the FS ninety repair, the fire safety switch. Um, the state is backlogged, so uh they do have our application. We're just waiting to get a date for it. Uh, for interdepartment work, uh, we just did a little maintenance work around the transfer station, fix some poles, uh, replace some of the uh the pipes that were over by the uh metal dumpster. It just did some cleaning up around the areas. Um, for the month of March, uh, Mark was a little bit busier. Um, not so much weather wise. Uh, we got more trees done. So out of seven days cutting, we get twenty-nine trees taken down uh in quite a few large leaders. Um, I know that there's one resident that's been pushing for a letter uh to be drawn up and accepted on trees that are on private property that we can't deal with, but they are still a hazard to the motorist. Um, I've been working with a couple of people from the Bay State Roads Group um to try and draft up a letter to submit to you guys to see if we can get it approved um to give to homeowners. Um, one of our members actually was injured on duty. Uh, him and another gentleman were uh trying to straight up a a street sign post. Uh, when they were shaking the post, the sign bracket broke off the top, came down and hit him in the melon. Uh, he ended up going to the hospital and getting a couple staples put in. Um, however, he didn't miss any days of work. He was a trooper. Um, he's since recovered. Um, we took on our final employee, Chris O'Clair. Um, I meant to pass the Zoom link along to him, so you guys could have met him tonight, but I failed uh today. It was kind of a busy day. Uh, he came to us uh from Hudson DPW. He's got a lot of experience uh in several different departments that they have that we don't. Uh, one good thing that's really cool is uh he went to school for horticulture. So I think that's going to be a big benefit with all the landscaping that we just had done at the Public Safety Building. Um, and hopefully get some done around the library and other areas. Um, the new one ton that was purchased to replace in two thousand and six has been delivered. Um, we were actively pursuing getting it registered. There was an issue with the title. Uh, because they put on our address here instead of one oh-three car or twenty-three linen, wherever the majority of them went to. So it got rejected. Uh, Mary's been working on uh getting that fixed for us so we can get that on the road and retire the old one. Um, we did start grinding stumps early on in March. Um, the guys were out about an hour and a half, and uh the gentleman we use, his machine broke down. Uh, so we haven't been back at that since. Um, the new Bobcat chipper, like everything else, we've got new uh got sent back for repairs. Um, the throwout Baron and the flywheel was just repaired. Um, that was not under warranty cost. The only thing that was under warranty was while the technician was in there, he noticed it was oil in the bell housing. Uh, so subsequently, Cummins uh had them replace the remain seal under warranty. Uh, the chipper's only got seventy-four hours on it. Um, so I was really kind of disappointed in that. Um, there's still no progress on our South Street Bridge. Um, we did meet with our engineer just briefly as as a catch up uh the other day. Um, to see, you know, if there were any new projects going on or how our bridge was making out. Um, instead of a fall of twenty-three, uh, it might be more of a spring of twenty-four project. If things start moving along. Uh, we got real lucky on that day and night when we had the uh the wind chills to forty degrees. Uh, we didn't have any freeze ups in any of the buildings. Um, and that might have been part because uh that's when Blue Sky had the second floor ripped apart there at the municipal building. So basically, everything was exposed. Everything was heated pretty well. Um, we did start removing all the bird screens that were down by the cruiser parking area and the food pantry entrance. Um, and then we have started installing aluminum trim to cover up all the uh the framing members. Um, so we're basically trying to eliminate any place that the birds can grab their feet on. Uh, it seems to be working because we're pushing them out from under the cover. Um, I have looked into some uh, it's like a deterrent disc that to the bird, it looks like fire and has this really bad odor and it's sticky and kind of things um that I think we're going to end up purchasing to put on top of the air conditioning unit down there. And the lighthouseing uh because they still continue to land on it. Um, so we're going to try that, see how they work. Um, they're supposedly good for two years out in the elements. Uh, they use them on the high-rise buildings. Um, and as as you know, the restoration cleanup had begun. Um, the only thing left up there, I believe, is a final inspection and to have the uh security cameras mounted. And the company that was going to be doing that was Willoughby Galaxy Integrated. Uh, they're the ones that originally put them together. Um, so they were going to be remounting that. Uh, nothing new in interdepartment. Uh, senior workout groups have been doing a really good jobs. Uh, one of them at the highway uh garage continues to do a phenomenal job. Uh, Kevin Pawn is one of our nuisance guys. Uh, he just started doing a lot of repair work there at the municipal center um and also helping out uh with some of the ADA uh compliant work that needs to get done. Um, so slowly, things are getting caught up. Hopefully. Um, and I know Peg, at some point, um, you, Victoria and I need to meet and discuss what we can do. Um, because I did get that call for the door.
Yeah, no, Fred, well, um, Victoria and I are going to meet tomorrow and we'll do an estimate breakdown of costs. And then when she sees you, uh, I think she said at the department head, she'll just like give it to you. So because I know you're busy and I don't want to like bump you twice in one day. So we got you.
Oh, no, no, it's it's Tuesday. We can do it. It's another day.
All right. All right. It's up to you. Eight thirty. You need to stop stairs in the corner.
He didn't say, was that early?
Yeah. Victoria is an early riser. That woman's in the building by eight. So you know what? Eight thirty worked for me.
All right. Um, I should be able to attend that.
All right. And if not, no biggie. We'll catch him.
Okay, um, I do have a a couple quotes coming in. I'm meeting with one gentleman Wednesday um about the blacktop that was requested up there at the eighteen seventy for the uh ADA parking spots. Um, because that that isn't covered by chapter ninety, so that would be a s- a separate expense. Um, so I'll be meeting with one gentleman Wednesday, and I'm waiting to hear back from uh one other. And hopefully we'll have an idea uh where to go for that. Um. I believe that's it in a nutshell. Uh, you're getting something.
Peggy, Chris, you have questions?
Right. Which uh which guy uh works on your staff and has black curly hair?
Uh, is he short?
Average height.
Um, it could be uh Brendan, Brenda Cabral.
All right. Well, if it was Brendan, uh, I was at the town offices today. He was outside cleaning everything, polite, smiled, you know, said hi. So it's just kind of nice. You know, I walked out the door, like interrupted them and uh, you know, just uh just a very pleasant experience.
He didn't often hold the door?
I was holding the door for Chief and his dog. So you know, Chief and his dog versus Brendan, Chief won. Next time I'll hold the door for Brendan.
All right. I I will pass that along to.
Yes, please do. And Fred, when we get the doors, I will need to hold the doors open for anybody. Bang the switch.
Exactly.
Right.
Uh, Chief, the the Fred, the weather stripping for the top of uh uh the highway barn?
Yes, uh, so I've reached out to Overhead Door Company. That's the company that was going to do the install. Um, so they're actually working with Cornell uh on getting the materials delivered to their company, and then they'll come here.
So.
And that, good, Chris.
Well, if you're not finished, go ahead.
Uh, the uh uh South Street Bridge that is going to push off to spring of twenty-four, are we are we worried about that bridge lasting that long? I mean.
Um, I I was, I myself am. Um, but uh our state engineer, uh Mickey Sprehn, he's not, he's not super worried about it. Uh, this, li- like we just had in our meeting, uh, I was shocked to hear him say that that's not as bad as what's out in the state. Um, so.
Our worst bridge is above average, which is a nice thing to hear about.
Yes, yes. Uh, and and we did finally make that repair. Uh, so we got the extra plates added underneath the decking, and we ended up cutting the top off and re uh hot topping it. Um, and that that's been holding for well over a month now.
So, good, Chris.
Um, so you you have an employee, uh, P- Pitar? Is it Trent?
Well, Trent worked with us last year as us, or he was one of our summer helpers.
Okay, okay. Um, I'm asking because I read um uh Kristen's annual town report. And she had down uh Pitar comma trend, and I I thought, well, maybe that's his name, but I thought, you know, if he ever sees it, he might be embarrassed. So it's, it it was Trent or it's Trent.
Yeah, yeah. We had a Trent Pitar and and Jack. Gosh, I don't remember Jack's last name.
He probably got it in her report.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, they came in and they did a lot of the summer moment for us.
Okay. Very good. That's the only thing I had. Nice job, Fred.
Thank you.
Uh, if there are any other questions, then great. Thank you, Fred, for for coming in and uh for the updates. I'm so happy to hear the trees are being taken care of, too.
Oh, yes. Actually, the gentleman that sold us the truck stopped in the office today to see what we thought about it. So I I thought that was pretty cool that he was in the area and he just wanted to check in personally.
Nice.
Good.
After I told them all the horror stories we had, he 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 was happy to see it was. He was happy to see it was outside anyway.
Okay. Thanks, bye Fred. Uh, I think that brings us to the town administrative report.
Right.
I'll try what I tried last week again, budget warrant. No, there there's a few other things I could say. Um, I have some actual good news. Um, we submitted, uh, while we finalized the recreation court, you awarded that bid. We're working on the contract documents, which is great. Um, that project is slated to be complete by June thirtieth, barring no delays. Which there could be supply chain delays, but I'm hoping there won't be. Um, we submitted five applications for um funding requests to Congresswoman Trahan's office. And she represents thirty five communities um as our federal congresswoman and. There were fifteen project requests that she is putting forward for funding. And our public radio safety project is one of them. So very excited about that. Awards will be made in December. Uh, so we'll see, maybe we will be able to fund that project. That would help with the third site um in the south side of town and some portable radios. Also submitted a list of project funding requests to our senator, our state senator and rep. And um, let's see, we. That's the biggest part of it. Fred went over the VHB conversation. We're talking about. You know, they're gonna actually put together a proposal for me on, you know, what the best projects would be. For us to put design funding into so that we can be shovel ready and apply for grants.
Great. I did want to say that your annual report was very good.
I gotta give some credit to Mary on that one because there was a lot of stuff I didn't know, having only been here three months of last year. Many thanks to Mary on that one.
Yes, that was, that was.
I sent the edit request out to fix poor Trent's name.
Okay. No, but it was, it was very informative. A lot of, a lot of uh data.
Excellent, thank you. And thank you, Barry.
Uh, questions?
I had a couple. Shocking. Um, Kristen, I know last time, uh, a month ago, you rattled off a bunch of uh. Bids and quotes that you were working on. Is there any more in the pipeline?
There are. So cable, I am hoping to put back out this week. Um, we are also working on, let's see, I've got the roof project. And what's the other one? CPA garden fence bid docs I've been working on. I met with Carl about that. I need to revise those. So once town meeting. Hopefully awards funding for that project as an FY twenty three project, we can go out. And then um the next phase of the radio system. Project that we do have funding for and the facility study. So yes, still in the works. Had to kind of put a pin in those the last three weeks with the warrant and everything.
Um. Last week, I know, you know, the fates were not aligning. You know, you wrote, Mary was out, June and Amy were swirling around the seven seas, getting all warm while we were freezing and shoveling. Um, in the event where you're all out, is there like a chain of command in case something happens? Is it, you know? They go to the chair and the vice chair if they can't get a hold of you type of thing?
Um, so what I did, unfortunately, I had to take my husband to the ER that day. Um, I am always available by phone. I did send out that reminder to department heads with my telephone number and let them know, please call me for anything. Um, you know, I would, you know, be more than willing to step out and reach out to folks as, you know, need be. So. Um, I mean, I think it's a, it was a little bit of a uh perfect storm on that one. So, but I mean, I always have my phone on. I never turn it off. So.
Alright, no, just curious. Again, I it's, you know, it's never happened. It probably will never happen again. But in the event that it does, you know, something will break and someone will need to be reached and, you know, you can't, you're not available. And the person can't wait again. Perfect storm on perfect storm on perfect storm. Where do they go?
Yep, and if I'm not for able, if it's something that's on site that for some reason I'm not able to be there for. Then I would contact one of the other department heads or, you know, if it was something, you know, worst case scenario, I would contact the chair.
And then last one, there was some communication that. Came in, Kristen, I copied you on it today from one of our residents, Jamie Muldoon, uh, her daughter Addison. Raised a boatload of money, uh. Last earth cleanup, one before, where she was able to buy a tree for nineteen Carter. And the library as well, and she was interested in uh. Solar, maybe for BMS. So didn't know if that's something, I wrote her back and said, hey, you know, can't really chat and email. But uh, if you wanna come, come on to a meeting, bring your daughter. Um, you know, so just didn't know, again, after budget season goes away and life is kind of sort of back to normal, if there's anything that we could do to. Assist her because she even said that she'd be willing to do some fundraising. Um, for the solar panel costs for the town barn. So, how cute is she?
Amazing. Um, it's funny, she should mention that. I actually had a conversation about six weeks ago. With Dan Ayala, who's the new facilities director for the schools. And he said to me, why isn't there solar on Berlin Memorial? It has a perfect roof for solar. And I said, that's a great question. My first step would be to talk to perhaps the Select, which is the company. That we're working with on the highway solar. And just to see if it's a viable, I mean, it looks like it's viable, but just from an engineering perspective, would it be viable? And um I, you know, would certainly be happy to loop her and you all in on that. So that's on my list of uh things to do and circle back with Dan on.
Yeah, again, I mean, it's not critical. It just came in from, you know, Mrs. Muldoon. I wanted to put it out there and you know what? And there's probably enough land somewhere around. Berlin that if you couldn't put it up on the roof, you can stick a solar panel on the ground somewhere with, you know, piping into the. Into the school. So just wanted to make sure that uh, you know, her email was acknowledged, you know, thanks for sending it, Jamie. Thanks for every, you know. Fun thing that you do, Addison, for raising money for the town. Um, you know, so wanted to see what we could do to assist.
And we, we still don't have a finalized lease with the schools about who's responsible for what.
Nope, that's on the list too.
Would this be us or or them? And then to be clear, the 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 reason that we couldn't chat on. On email is the email that she sent out went to their full select board. That individually, we can talk in email, but what involves all of us. It comes an open meeting law violation if we start commenting on each other's things. And so. Peg, Peg needs to the answer, and so the rest of us couldn't say anything.
Yeah, and you know, and that's what it was. I'm like, I don't want the open meeting law gods swooping in on and, you know, and slapping my hands. So she's like, so what can I do? I'm like, well, you get a hold of the chair and you just come to a meeting, so.
No, you were very good in that email.
Okay, alright, that's all I got.
Chris, you have questions?
Um, no, I think I'm good.
I think I'm good at the moment too, because I am just raring to go. It's fiscal year twenty four budget discussion and votes.
Okay, so, um, the school took their official vote over the weekend. And I ran some numbers based off of that, which I'm gonna share with you momentarily here. Uh, let's see, now on. Version ten of the budget, believe it or not, hold on.
And this is revised from what you have in the folder from.
Right, so I got the number.
Updated over the weekend and then you updated it again today, right?
I got numbers from uh Nancy yesterday, so I wanted to work on them a little bit today and uh. See what it looked like when I plugged in their final numbers. And I have, alright, just go down to expenditures. So. Now we gotta make that bigger. You can't see that. How's that?
Better.
Alright. Sorry, give me just a moment so I can make it big enough so everybody can see. There we go. Okay. So as you can see, pretty much everything is in place budget wise, except for the schools. Um, I did confirm last week with Asabit. That their assessment is final and is not going to change. So that leaves us with Berlin uh Memorial and Tohonto. So I plugged in their final numbers into here. And what that leaves us with, and I did this in a little bit of a novel way. Um, and this was actually an idea that Scott brought up, I think at the last meeting. What I did was, if you look at the Tohonto assessment line item here. That looks a little weird to highlight. I don't know why that doesn't highlight, right? Um, but if you look at that line item, I first thought, why don't we fund Tohonto? Because that's kind of the multi-town issue. That's the smaller of the budgets, the smaller of the budget increase. We had been kind of doing this off of a pers- uh percentage increase that was about five percent. For each of the budgets. So what I did was, I said, well, let's fully fund Tohonto at the three million two thirteen seven oh nine number. That they voted, which is a nine point two percent increase over FY twenty three. Uh, the Boil- the Boylston FinCom has said they will be recommending um the budget. So I have to figure out how this works in terms of if we still don't all agree. And it's only about Berlin Memorial. Does a regional meeting still happen? I think it may, but I think it may only pertain to Berlin Memorial. So we'll see, but I thought we've got two issues, the Tohonto assessment, the Berlin assessment. Let's take the Tohonto assessment issue off the table. And focus on Berlin Memorial because that is the largest budget increase. That is a twenty nine point four percent increase over FY twenty three. So what that equates to is a one million fifty eight thousand eight hundred and twenty three dollar increase. Uh, largely driven by uh mandated special education costs. So when I plug in. Funding Tohonto at their request and whatever we have left over going to Berlin Memorial. That creates a deficit of nine hundred and thirty seven thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. When I throw that into our magic state calculator that has all kinds of caveats and that it's FY twenty three. It doesn't take commercial values into effect and could completely change one way or the other. That comes out to approximately five hundred and fifty three dollars. Additional on top of the three hundred and ninety seven dollars that a two and a half percent normal budget increase. Would already increase taxes. So basically, you have your two and a half percent budget increase as standard. That's a three hundred and ninety seven dollar increase for the average single family home valued at five hundred and fifty eight thousand. So adjust up or down depending on your home value.
So how much was it? How much was it, Kristen?
For. So, if we start at two and a half percent. Increase in taxes, that's a three hundred and ninety seven dollar increase for the average single family home. That the state has a value of five hundred and fifty eight thousand as the average single family home price in Berlin. Obviously, you have to adjust up and down depending on the value.
I just didn't get the number.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so yeah, let, please let me know if I'm going too fast. So then you're gonna add on. In order to. Um, meet this deficit of nine hundred and thirty seven thousand four seventeen. It would cost approximately, with all the caveats, another five hundred and fifty three dollars, give or take. Um, or another, or basically, uh, for, I'm sorry, for basically a total of nine hundred and fifty dollars. Instead of the anticipated three hundred and ninety seven dollar increase. So what that means in terms of percentages is that instead of a two point five percent increase on taxes. You would be going up to just shy of a nine point seven percent increase on taxes. And I'll stop there if anybody has any questions.
Well, my, my first reaction is. It 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 isn't fair. I guess. It isn't fair. To both the schools. I know that we had previously done five and five.
Okay.
That's my first reaction. I don't know what everybody else is feeling.
I mean, I I feel that that with the increase the schools say they need. That thinking that we're gonna hold it at two and a half percent is probably unlikely. And I think there are numbers between the. The two and a half that we'd like to be at and the. Almost nine and a half to ten percent that we'd have to be at to, to what they call level fund the schools or or. And and for for me, it's certainly a credibility gap for the schools. Because they keep talking about how much they're, you know, trying to cut and then they come back and ask for more money. Um, and then they talk about a, and then they do this email about how this is their level services budget that adds three to five new positions. You know, and for me, levels, say, say level services and then adding staff is not level services.
Exactly.
And uh, and so I, I just, I I I wish, I I know it is a new superintendent. I know it's a relatively new finance director. Um, uh, I know that that uh, that that much of this is a special ed, which is a state requirement. And then parents with special ed, uh, uh, special needs students uh should have those needs met. Um, I just. It, uh, my hardest time is less with the numbers and more with the credibility.
Yeah, I I agree. And I'm very worried about next year. It's not gonna be any better.
Right.
You know, it it, there's gotta be a time when we need to negotiate and that hasn't happened at all.
So I I will say one thing, and I'm I'm putting all of my notes up here for you to see if you're able to, can you see the spreadsheet I just put up?
No.
I know.
Uh, hold on. They're just notes, but I'm gonna share them because I think it makes it a little bit easier to see here.
And Kristen, while you're sharing, Scott, the other Scott has his hand up in the audience.
Okay, so I closed the audience so I could see the screen better.
I know, that's why I got you.
Thank you, thank you.
So I, I don't know if you want to take Scott first.
Yeah, why don't we take Scott Schultz first, Scott?
Am I here?
Yep, you're here.
Okay. Alright, so, I I just wanted to make sure some of the things clear, because you're already seeing the uh. No runaway descriptions of things on the uh, no. Web uh, or the social media going on in town. And I think I wanna make sure there's some things clear because clearly there's even miscommunications that we. Would normally expect anyways, but definitely things get out of control quickly. So one thing I want to clarify is, I know you talked about the tax increase being three hundred and ninety seven. Dollars with the overall levy target two and a half percent. Uh, one thing I want to make sure clear for anybody who's listening in, that incorporates a five percent increase for Berlin Memorial and Tohonto. So it's not three hundred and ninety seven dollar increase regardless of the schools. Uh, in fact, a lot of that three hundred and ninety seven dollar increase is because of the schools with just a five percent. Increase to their budgets. Um, then, of course, meeting the rest of the way, if we went all the way to what they wanted. That's where the additional five hundred and fifty three dollars are. So I just want to make that clear uh on those numbers. Uh, then just the other piece, though, we're obviously, you know, the the biggest thing, I think we have a disagreement right now with the schools. Is their additional funds that they have available to them. And what they anticipate those funds to be. Uh, one is being the circuit breaker numbers, which is obviously what you'll get reimbursement from the state, which unfortunately. A lot of that is uh one year in arrears. Um, what they anticipate to have and likewise where they're targeting toward their budget for this year. And also, even when you look at another fund that they have available to themselves. With the school choice um funds. Those are things that obviously they don't want to completely deplete. But we're in a situation where these increases are drastic, that it it's. It's a storming situation right now, and these are like their part of their rainy day funds. And we need to, I think, we still need to emphasize to the schools. And to the school committee, they need to release more of these funds that they have available to them. To put towards the budget for next year to alleviate some of this uh, um, increase.
Scott, I think, I I'm not sure if they can right now, but they also have E and D. I'm not sure when they can use that, but you know, once it's certified, I believe they can.
Right, so I mean, that's, no, part of the issue to me right now is. E- even with the the latest, though, the out of district tu- tuitions that just came up for BMS. And I understand these are difficult numbers to calculate, uh, but they come back with just say, we're putting in zero. Even though the possibility of them or probability of them getting some type of. Even though the possibility of them or probability of them getting some type of emergency aid because of the drastic increase in out-of-district tuitions over the previous year, looking at going to this coming year. Uh, is pretty high. And then to uh, budget a a number of zero, I think is is ridiculous. And what's going to happen is if they get, no, what now if I if they get very certain unless it's on these students suddenly leave the system, so then the cost won't be there. But if if we go and provide them all the funds that they request. The state in that, we're not talking about changes in the state formulas. We're talking about just using what they've been using for a number of years. Considering they're trying to increase those formulas, they get quite reasonable to expect that what reimbursement we've gotten from the state will be consistent at a minimum will be consistent with we've gotten in the past. If we just just did move forward with what they're requesting. What would they do with what could be hundreds of thousands of dollars of reimbursement they could be receiving this year? That one, they didn't need to have to go to the taxpayers to get. And what kind of agreement could we come up with them? And what would they do with those funds? Because basically, once it goes to them, it's basically just the school committee to make the decision how to spend them. No longer direct line to the voters on this. And I think there needs to be some type of agreement on if the reimbursement is significant. That, no, this is going to be used some way to offset the assessment the following year.
Right, yeah, they they may only be able, if it goes into circuit breaker, they may only be able to use it for circuit breaker. For special ed.
Um, right, but they have plenty in special ed to, I mean, play of expense and special ed to use it for, which would help alleviate from the uh, levy.
Yes. Um, if I were, if I were on the school committee right now, I'd probably be get trying to get in touch with the governor. Uh, you know, and we've done, you know, the rep and Senator route. Um, but I I'd be somehow lobbying for more circuit breaker and have it come this year.
Yes. So Scott and Chris, I have Scots, Scots, Scots and Chris, uh, Kristen. Um, three questions. So one of them you just hit on. I mean, Kristen, you sent an email around and it came out through MMA about Governor Haley and the additional funding that she's going to push through. And and not that I want to say it's just Berlin that has this problem. It's, you know, to the left, to the right, to the top, to the bottom of Massachusetts. So I can't imagine that we're the only one, uh, you know, school district that is in this conundrum. So what can we do about those figures? And, you know, part of my, well, my second question is if we just did um, special education increases. Do you know what that number is, you know, out of the nine percent? Is it really only going to be a seven percent increase? Is it going to be a six percent increase? And then my third question is, are we at the forty-five day limit? So basically, there's not a lot that we can do about this budget.
What do you mean forty-five degree?
Well, or forty-five days. Have to submit their budget within like forty-five days of the town um, meeting?
Yes.
Uh, yeah.
That that deadline has passed, so yes, that's why they had to meet on a Saturday. Um, uh, what was this?
They can always.
No, it was if we only did special education funding, would that bring that nine percent down? And then, you know.
That's what I was trying to pull up.
Is that is and is anybody clear on what the additional special education out-of-district tuitions number increase is?
It's so I'm sharing a slide now, so this is the final budget um, from Saturday. So there is a projected six hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollar increase in in circuit breaker. I'm special education rather at Berlin Elementary. And at a three hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollar projected increase at Tohoto.
Are any of the in-house students included in that number? Because they have special education services.
It should be everyone. Um.
Well, then that wouldn't be what the increase is because people have, you know, been having services last year. That's what I, that's what I, that's the number I would like to know. What is the increase with just the new out-of-district tuitions?
Oh, just out of district.
Yeah, there's a slide, uh.
Is there another slide?
Ah, yes, I think it's round slide.
Oh, yes, I did see that one.
Um, Scott, our Scott, um, Mary, I'm going to assume Porter, has her hand up in the audience. And other Scott, not that you're not our Scott too, but you know, your other Scott versus our Scott.
I I do my best to make it as confusing as people as possible. I'm just gonna have to.
While you're bringing Mary forward, can I just, I just wanted to say one thing. Um, and I was pulling up my budget because of this. So the actual, this is really interesting because the Tohoto number went up um, by another seven thousand three twenty-eight. But the Berlin Memorial number actually went down. Um, when I ran the final numbers by about eighty-nine thousand. So, but they added. And this is the part that I'm a little bit confused on that I have to look into because I'm still fresh crunching these numbers. Um, and I confirmed all these numbers. I did confirm at least the numbers to make sure. Um, if I've put those back into the spreadsheet, like Chris said, back on the percentage increases. That actually allows me to go up to a six percent increase because of the reduction at BMS. Um, so I'm I'm gonna just triple confirm those numbers with her because they've added things, so I'm not really sure how that went down.
So in just to confirm, so Kristen, they, because I was looking at the capital planning stuff. They approved, they approved, approved a bunch of stuff. So did that come out of the BMS budget? But then they added additional things to take that number back up?
Yes. So one of the things that we had talked about was um, when we went through some of the presentations. There were capital items that were in the operating budget. Um, and they really shouldn't be in there because we fund those out of two different funding sources. Capital comes out of free cash, the assessment for the operating comes out of taxation. Um, and so I, you know, recommended they remove the capital and put it in capital where it should be. And that would lower the operating assessment. Um, but there were add-ins after that that brought the operating assessment back up. So the capital budget increased ultimately and the operating budget.
I think it's gonna be. Go ahead, Scott.
Chris, I was gonna just point out that on on this slide, it does not say in a clear number, and this is the amount of money we want from taxpayers.
Right, that's the next one, although the next.
It's the net of operating budget minus state revenue, but.
This number is wrong, though. The this, this number is not correct. So um, because I got a call this morning about that. But this is the breakdown except that number should be six, four, sorry, four. Four, six, five, seven, one, four, nine.
Right, just goes back to this credibility gap. The numbers don't tie up, number is not, is not clear what they're asking for. Because we saw on earlier slides that the amount of money they're getting from the state is also going up substantially this year. This is just, I mean, again, it's six, it's what, six hundred thousand of four or five point two million dollar budget, you know, but. I mean, again, here, this slide doesn't say how much is special ed going up, which they're saying is responsible for a large chunk of their increase. But if you go back a few slides, it shows up their special ed is going up by a lot. But it's going up by about five hundred thousand, and they're asking for one point two million more.
That's because I think they've put all of the special ed in some of those numbers.
Right, again, the the numbers don't match. If you go from slide to slide, the numbers don't work. They don't match out. They don't tie out. It's it's. Because because this slide here, this slide here shows Berlin Memorial, all of their special ed is going up by six hundred and eighty-two thousand. But they've asked for a one point two million dollar increase. And so that is then six hundred thousand dollars for their basic operations, which they say is zero increases. And I would get it if it was two percent, you know, because some things go up. But that that, uh, you know, their level service budget adds three to five new staff. And I still don't know if it's three or five because one emails says three and one emails says five.
Well, three is for Boylston, um, BES, I'm assuming is Boylston Elementary, correct? Compared to Berlin Memorial.
Right.
So they included three uh, Boylston uh, people.
But didn't the email we just get over the weekend talk about five people?
Yeah.
Right, so their total budget increased by five.
He, I I, oh, well.
I I wish, I'm a numbers person. I like spreadsheets and I can't follow this stuff. I wish I could. I'd like to be able to support the schools more. I feel more comfortable supporting the schools what they're asked for. Even if it made a ten percent increase of the town, if I could at least understand what it went for. And I can't despite the joint meetings, despite asking for, despite seeing all these, these, these uh, these PowerPoints. I I think the numbers to me just don't tie out.
And these kind of numbers are going to either decimate the school or decimate the town. So I think that's where the negotiation comes in, and we haven't had any.
Well, it's too late now, isn't it?
Well, we.
You can always reduce the budget. They just can't increase it, and I.
I agree. I agree, but I'm saying in terms of negotiation, you know, I mean, it's really, you need to wipe off one, two, and three. There's really not a will give you a few given.
And they talk about they're working and all the things they've cut to make this number smaller. And then they come back with a bigger number than they did last time. I mean, at least this time, at least for once, the number went down. It didn't go down tons, but it went from four point seven to four point six million. And so that is at least down a a chunk. Uh, but we have to decide what we're going to recommend to the taxpayers based on what FinCom has recommended to us. And based on what the school has asked for.
Is is Mary have any thing to add?
Yes, I was gonna say, can we hear from Mary? We've kind of like bombarded her.
No, um, no problem. I think I'm off mute, right? You can hear me?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, and um, Scott Hawkins, I feel your pain because I've been, I've been sitting through these sessions. The numbers are pretty much incomprehensible coming out of the school committee. I I I've never seen anything like this. And to echo what Scott Schultz said, we were sitting in a joint. What was it? What was set up to be a joint session between the two finance committees, Berlin and Boylston on March sixth? And of course, it's it's a public meeting, but the but the school committee shows up, brings in the district reps. They gave us a PowerPoint presentation. There's a, and there's a whole other presentation. And but but what what we were able to determine on the fly is that just to echo what Scott Schultz said and maybe say it at a higher level rather than the numbers is it appears in particular that the special education reserve funds, the circuit breaker monies are significantly understated. And and you see it in the slide that was just up here. I it's disappeared, but you you can see it. And there's a little asterisk saying, oh, we're waiting for the governor's numbers. So there there seems to be a little philosophical divide because I personally have reached out to our state rep, our state senator's office. I I I've been following the um, the messages coming out from the state. And it's pretty clear, we have a statewide issue with funding on special education. Driven in large part by a fourteen percent increase that was permitted by the state for your out-of-district tuitions. Okay, so it there's a problem there. But my assessment of the situation is, number one, I can't make header tails of the school committee's numbers. And they keep shifting, which makes it even harder. But what the consistent message I'm getting is the state is looking to hold up its end on this. And I think that the town should not be assessed for the state mandate that the state says we're going to fund it. We're going to fund it on an emergency basis this year because it's bad across the state. So so I don't get why the school committee would look to the town to fill that gap when the state says we're going to fill it. And the town doesn't have the revenue to fill it. So i- it it's again incomprehensible to me. And uh, for for your benefit for the select board here. I'm looking at a little expense category summary that Kristen got from the school district and and sent it, I think, on March eleventh to us on FinCom.
Oh, I have that, I think. Is that the break, the budget category breakdown, Mary?
Yes, and.
I can pull that up.
Sure, and I know, I know Chris has served on the school committee and might be able to shed a little light on what those categories mean. But one of those categories, there you go, the last one on that list. I calculated the percent increase for fiscal twenty-four over fiscal twenty-three. Because the this little chart gives us the variance, doesn't give us percent. But I I found it interesting, the out-of-district tuition line. That went up ninety-nine point eight four percent now. The out-of-district tuition across across the state goes up fourteen percent. And Berlin Memorial uh, ha- has, at least at the time this was prepared, had one more special education student than we did the previous year. So so we're looking at fiscal twenty-four, uh, ten students, fiscal twenty-three, we had nine that required these services. So those num- when you look at the percents, that doesn't add up. And then the line above it, fixed charges, this is where Chris might be able to help. I don't know what that is. But that goes up forty-three point six eight percent. And then other services go up twenty-one point eight one percent. Right, so those are the two, those are the three big increases that show in these expense lines. Other services, fixed charges, out-of-district tuition. And the only one I have information on is the out-of-district tuition, and that it it seems like there's no basis for that increase. Um, and then when you look at the the line that is instruction, instruction support. That I assume is is really the the teaching, is your educational piece. That only went up one point two two percent. So it it went up at a a smaller rate than anything else on this expense line. But I I don't know what fixed charges are, and I don't know what other services are. And I don't know, Chris, if you know from your work with school committee way back when, if you can shed any light on that expense category, what does that represent? Um, so so and just to sum it up, what my my look at this thing. I think the revenues have been understated by the school committee, and I think the expenses have been overstated. But the numbers are so erratic and so confusing that you, it's it's actually hard to talk to it. You know, they're shifting.
I agree. I I I think that the uh, this is different categories than I'm used to looking at on a school budget. She's renamed the categories.
Yeah, she was trying to do that. I I that could be my fault because we had asked her to do something more similar to what ACABIT provides. Um, so I I think that was a draft she had put together based off of that. Um, but fixed cost in in my understanding would be things like insurance, Worcester Regional Retirement. Uh, property casualty workers comp, those types of things, you know, health insurance and regular insurance and.
So it wouldn't be that their costs are fixed, then it would just be that you have to have them? Is that what you might fix?
They're required and you have.
Okay.
Much like ours, basically their assessments. So whatever Worcester Regional says, you know, it's going to go up by, it's a fixed cost in that. You know, we don't have any control over what that increase is.
And the and then other, what, I don't know what others.
That one I can't help with.
Well, I mean, the biggest number there would be the teacher salaries. So what was, what was that one, the the?
Um, putting it back up.
That was small. I think that was the smallest one.
Right, that increase was only one point two two percent, Chris.
No, no, I I don't mean it has to be the biggest increase. It has to be the biggest number.
Yeah, and it is.
Yeah, well, that's the teacher salaries. Administration, uh. I'm trying to remember if that's just people at the superintendent's office. It may be, or it may include the principals and so so on and so forth at the elementary schools and Tohoto. Um, they're all, they're just not, and I don't understand why we couldn't ask for a line item budget, because I could always ask for one when I was on school committee.
So what are our options?
So Kristen, this spread, this PowerPoint you're showing us is uh, from their meeting on Saturday, right? This is not old numbers?
This one, but I have another, I have the one from Saturday. Hold on.
I I have a thought. I just want to make sure my numbers work, so I'm using pegs round number scenarios, because, you know, when we're talking numbers, this big rounding number. So I'm I'm starting with, you know, three point six million is what they had last year.
And actually, the one I'm sharing is the up. And actually, the one I'm sharing is the up, the one that has the correct number on it that was misprinted. Um, so if you go to this page, you'll see now it's um, the four point six five.
Right, and so if you, if you, in this slide deck, do they have one that shows fiscal year twenty-three special ed to fiscal year twenty-four special ed?
That's, that's what I was thinking, is we need to go to last year's budget and look at the net increases.
Yeah, so, so I think I, I'm about there, Chris, and so if I take last year's budget at three point six mil-, uh, you, you had a slide there. Now go, uh, the one that just talks about special ed.
That's the special education budget, the bottom part here, FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four.
So they have another slide that says special ed was six hundred thousand, so maybe I'm just totally lost.
Not the out-of-district one, maybe?
This is the out-of-district. District, special education, this, this is where our biggest, this is where the biggest uh, spike is coming from.
Sorry, guys.
You can see the increase of four hundred and fifty thousand and fif- from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four, and that was before the latest situation that happened just like a week and a half ago.
Uh, so, my numbers are low, I, I'll, I'll redo my numbers in a second, but if you go back to special, the special ed slide then, sorry, Chris.
No, problem.
Um, and so if their budget in fiscal year twenty-three was uh, three point six million, and one point two million was for special ed, that's two point four for all the rest of their budget, correct? And so if we give them like seven or eight percent on that number, and then an additional five hundred thousand for special ed, I think we come to a number a little, but I, I have to do the numbers again here. When we come to something where I don't, I don't wanna give them all the number, the increase for special ed, because I think they're going to get more circuit breaker money. I think that uh, some of that is not gonna happen, because that's, that's based on some worst-case scenario, and I, I think that they'll find a way to do it, and so I'm trying to find something that is, I get that, that salaries went up a little bit, I get that health insurance went up a chunk, I get the utilities went up a chunk, and so I'm willing on their core budget, which is their budget minus special ed, going up more than the two and a half that we've done across every other department in town. In fact, I think even at five percent, which is twice as much as we gave every other department in town. Um, uh, and so what I try to do is, I, I try to both talk and do math at the same time, which is failing me horribly. Um, uh, I come to a number that I would think I would like to try to recommend.
So what is going to be presented to the town at town meeting, are you gonna give them, a choice and say, if you go with choice A, you can expect, as Scott, other Scott said, of a three hundred and ninety-five dollar increase, which is your two and a half percent for Berlin Memorial and Tohonto. Are you going with Plan B, which is the ginormous one, uh, which is a nine point seven percent increase, which will result in uh, an additional five hundred something, of taxes, bringing your total taxes that you can anticipate, um, to approximately nine hundred and fifty dollars.
We, we present the budget we're about to recommend, and that someone can on the floor make a motion to change that.
Right, they both get printed side by side, this, because um, under our regional agreement, we do put the school budget in there. And then if it's different, we also can put the FinCom's, you know, and select board recommended budget in there. Um, the motion, since it's your warrant, would be for your budget, and then that motion can be amended on the floor to the higher school budget.
So I'm asking, is the finance committee, do they have a clue what they're doing yet, or is it a little too early?
I, I thought we were getting close to a clue, but uh, what happened in the past two weeks, and even after what just happened on Saturday. There, there's this um, no, nothing static about any of this right now. So obviously, we're meeting again on Wednesday to try and hammer out exactly where we want to go with this. We've had some discussions about this, uh, you know, just this past uh, Wednesday, and I think we're, we're getting closer. Uh, I mean, so the things we're looking at is what type of uh, you know, things that we can smooth this out for this expected to be a one-year big bump. You know, like say for their special education, oh, district special education requests, how could that be smoothed out with more of a, article of using free cash uh, for that, and then, uh, you know, so that next year when they get their reimbursement, that, hopefully that has, those, we've gotten through that spike, and then don't have to worry about accessing this all directly through the levy. Now, no, it, no, there are some things that we, you know, at least we have a, a decent free cash position at the moment. Though we do have, I mean, coming on the list from BMS for their capital plan, a target of one point one million for a new roof replacing the, the slanted roof on the school. So there are things like this that, you know, we will probably potentially put in jeopardy, depending on if there's a continuation of the spikes from these uh, oh, district special education. I mean, we would hope that we're over what seems like almost a big case of, you know, bad luck, or sit, oh, the statistical norm for the percentage of students suddenly, for needing all district special education. But if we can get through that without having to tackle the whole levy and people seeing, a big spike in their uh, bills for next year, and of course, those are no essentially permanent spikes, that, you know, can we utilize cash, free cash, and what's the right free cash number?
So, I, as I understand it, that the two capital numbers, Berlin Memorial Capital and Tohonto Capital Assessment, are, are both already going to be coming from free cash, there'll be a motion that, that that money comes from free cash, it's not, that we've already smoothed out the sort of bumps in that. Cuz sometimes those go up and sometimes those go down.
Except for the debt exclusion, um, the Tohonto number doesn't break it out, but it's actually two hundred and eleven in capital project costs for Tohonto, and the rest comes out of the debt exclusion.
So, uh, I, I have a proposal. And, and I am totally fine for this being ripped to shreds, I just, I want us to get to something where we potentially can have numbers to put. So, uh, if, if the core operating of Berlin Memorial is two point four billion, and we give them a six percent rise, which is substantial, that's a hundred and forty-four thousand. If we give them five hundred thousand for the increase in special ed, which is a substantial amount of money for the added students and the added costs, they say, that's an increase of six hundred and forty-four thousand. On top of their previous budget of three point six million, I proposing a budget of four point two five uh, million, for the BMS budget, and would then want to add to that, instead of putting money into stabilization this year, spend three hundred thousand dollars from stabilization to offset this sort of one-time, hopefully bump in need for special ed, uh, for Berlin Memorial. So that, yes, this still puts us over the two and a half percent for, for taxpayers, but keeps it close. I can't do this, that math fast enough, but I'm guessing it's a three to three and a half percent increase, uh, for the average house, assuming no change in commercial residential breakdown.
So you're saying four million two hundred and fifty thousand would be this number?
Yes. Uh, you're, you're, you're showing.
Kristen, I don't know what you're showing.
Your, your, not, not your budget.
Oh, all right, let's try that again.
Oh, sorry, two, I, 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 my earlier about, two, two million two hundred and forty-four thousand is the number I would like to do.
So I think I'd like to see this, like, written or something, and, cuz I, it's really hard, you know, it's hard to follow.
Yep, uh, I will see if I can quickly do a, cuz I, I, I've been doing this during the meeting, this was not a thought I had, starting at this meeting, so.
If I can make one suggestion, Scott, we actually, we have subs- enough in free cash that we could fund it without taking out of stabilization.
I'm not talking about taking out of stabilization, I'm talking about not putting more into stabilization. I think in a year where we're having a substantial increase in, but, in, in cost, putting money into stabilization is not what we should be doing. That's the whole purpose of stabilization.
Sure, I, I just, I, I would argue with our free cash balance, we actually have enough probably to do both.
I, I would argue that, like you said before, Scott, it, it's, it's all got to do with trust and accurate numbers. Till I know that these are accurate and will add up, I, 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 I don't know if I'm ready to, I, I need for, I, I need the accurate numbers.
This is, I mean, what the areas we were looking at, we, we were looking at, writing some of the numbers on, and again, this is, does not include the changes that were on, from this past Saturday, we're going back to last week Wednesday when we were meeting. We were looking at what, if we targeted a similar uh, levy increase that was going on at Boylston, which is uh, four percent. And four percent allowed us to do eight percent on both BMS and Tohonto, and that eight percent, nearly uh, brings us to what you, at least at that time, what, To- the Tohonto request was, it was by, we were just short by less than thirty thousand dollars. And then, you know, looking at what we had for BMS and six, really, the, what you're dealing with on the BMS side is the special education number. How can we, you know, fund that uh, primarily from utilizing the, the free cash number? So this falls into like, you know, very similar to what those Scott Hawkins is uh, describing, and, again, there's always, the, the one, the biggest concern we have on the free cash number, but again, do we just push this out? My understanding is, the, the roof situation is just that we're nearing the end life of that expected time for the roof, that there isn't, as far as I understand, any type of uh, um, defect actually requiring immediate replacement. I mean, we just put that risk, but we do have that one point one million dollar uh, capital item that's sitting out there, and, you know, that ideally would be, go funded through the, the free cash.
I'm, I'm doing my, working my magic here, Scott, trying to, because of the reduction, we could actually do nine percent if we did four percent on taxes.
Okay, it could be nine percent now. And nine percent, does that actually beat us at the Tohonto number, guys, after the Saturday?
It does not, we're still, we're close, we're like six grand shy now of the Tohonto number.
Okay, you're about six thousand. Well, actually, now that they made that change to the Tohonto number, I mean, obviously, Tohonto number has changed for um, Boylston also, so.
Right, we would have been there if that number had not increased.
Right. And primarily, the increase, I think, is he- adding uh, a headcount at Tohonto, right? I don't think there's anything else that was accounting for that increase.
Uh, there's an assistant principal, I believe.
Yeah, it's on the first page of their Saturday, Saturday's PowerPoint is.
Do you see this now, or no, I'm, I'm not sure.
No, it's still your numbers, so while you guys are flipping around, here's a question, and I know it came up last time when we were talking about a coffee talk. It is now almost eight thirty, we've been doing this for about an hour. You gotta figure the people that are here, you know, us, you know, the other Scott and Mary, we kind of sort of know what we're talking about and what we're doing. To the average voter in town, I'm not quite sure it's so clear. So, do we have just a separate night to talk about both budgets? And publicize the snot out of this to get people to come and maybe invite, school committee, because I don't wanna just say, hey, insert night here is coffee talk, and bam, we spend twenty minutes on this and go, and then people get to town meeting and go, I still don't know what I'm supposed to do, I, I don't know what number I'm looking at. He's telling me one thing, he's telling me another, I got this for tax, I got this for tax. We don't need to make a decision tonight, but can we kind of percolate on it that we might need to have just a special night on, school budgets?
We, we might.
I think now that we have the final numbers, we, we might need to do that, because it's changed everything again.
And as the other Scott said earlier, there's so much information, misinformation that's swirling around. You go from, oh, we can just increase it and there's no tax increase, to, hey, I'm sure you can support this. Hey, I don't know where you're getting your numbers from, it's the game of telephone, you talk to three different people, you're gonna get three different answers, so. I would like us and FinCom, you know, to present, this is what it is, when you come to town meeting and here's two pieces of paper, this one means this, this one means this, and if there's something in the middle, you figure it out, but I, I honestly feel in my heart that you need to devote an entire night, a night being an hour or two, to this specific conversation. And let, let school committee come in and explain their numbers.
So why, why don't we meet with our finance committee first?
But we don't have a number, but we don't even know what our number is.
No, we don't, we don't have to, we need to hear each other out.
We, we, we need to put a number on a piece of paper to mail to people as soon as humanly possible, so this conversation can start. Cuz the conversation in town can't start until we have a recommended number.
It's two days, Scott, they have a meeting in two days. Can we be, can we be on your agenda, Scott Schultz?
Uh, yes, you definitely could be on our agenda, I mean, we, you know, we do actually meet in person, so, please, uh, please come.
Is it forty-eight hours?
Well, you're, uh. For us to be, yes, for you to be there, yes, that's the question.
Quick post of meeting.
I, I think we're too late, you could be on it for, you could be at eight thirty.
Yeah. Uh, cuz it's eight twenty-eight, so we can't be on it for seven thirty.
Do you want us to? Unless you wanted to do another night.
Finance is already meeting on Wednesday.
Right.
You can listen, you just can't deliberate, which is maybe helpful, maybe not.
Well, because.
That will put us on the same page.
Yep, no, we need to be able to chat.
Can you post it for eight thirty on uh, Wednesday?
Mary, hurry up some posts, and she's got a minute.
I post, post the select board meeting for eight thirty Wednesday, and, uh, and the agenda is to meet with finance committee, and finance committee will have an hour to deliberate before you get there.
There you go, and we could go early, we just can't deliberate till eight thirty.
Yeah, it, it's gonna take a few minutes to put that agenda together, um, I.
So we'll go, we'll sit quietly on the other side of the table and take copious notes with questions, and then when the clock turns, go.
We've all been there until after ten o'clock lately anyway, so we're not with it.
No, is anyone bringing snacks, it's the same, okay. All right, so eight thirty-ish it is, ish, Wednesday, back room.
Yeah, it's not pretty, but it's been posted.
Oh.
I don't, I don't know your exact room, what room?
Uh, the, the one down on the left.
I think it's two twenty-six.
I'm amending it just to add the precise room, but that's never stopped any of our other boards and committees, so uh.
Right.
I'll fix that.
I think it's two twenty-six.
Thank you, Mary, I didn't know how long it took, thank you so much.
It is, it is, we meet in room two twenty-six, finance does.
Perfect. Okay.
All right, well, maybe we can hammer some things out that night, you know, between all of us.
Okay, I, I will, I will email out the write-up that I talked about, um, as just a, as a thought, not a vote of the select board, but that it gives something to add to the conversation.
And I'm gonna send out this updated budget that has the um, typo fixed, or this updated presentation from BBRSD that I got this afternoon that has the typo corrected. So everybody has that one that I was just showing.
Justin, is it just that one number that was a typo?
That, that's, as far as I know, that's the only one I've been told was a typo.
Okay, I have to go back and check now, back to caught, back to Scott's original statement of credibility of, numbers shifting and not adding and spelling mistakes that have come through on the budget.
And, and just the credibility of not, not trying to, to come to a happy medium with, between the town budget and, and the school committee budget.
Well, it's not even the happy, if, if they're fine sort of advocating for their, their number, it's just if their number could make sense, if the twenty-six page spreadsheet or the twenty-six page PowerPoint, the.
If the twenty six page spreadsheet or the twenty six page PowerPoint, the numbers on slide two match the numbers on slide twelve. You know, where they don't say level services or adding staff, they don't say we're cutting a bunch of things, but the numbers come in higher. It has been this thing since January.
Yeah, I know. But it's also just a matter of. You you know, like you said, you know, you you don't say it's a level services budget and said with the exception of. And it's not services.
That's not level services.
Right, so, and if you have, out of district, out of district tuitions. You have to say, well, what can we not do because of this, just at least partially?
Okay, I think we've done as much as we can on this probably tonight. I mean, we've already spent it. We spent an hour on this every meeting for the last three or four meetings.
I know.
And we're no closer now than we were a month ago, and we're, again, I. This this has to get to people's, we have to have a number and we have to get it to people, so we're gonna have the. Night long conference meeting, cause we can't have a night long meeting if there's not a number to discuss.
Correct.
Alright, well, Mary Scott, other Scott. Thanks, see you in a couple days.
Alright, alright, I'll I'll go back to mute. Thank you.
Speaking of things to get to taxpayers, the actual warrant. Yes, it will also have the budget attached and and their recommendations, but.
Yep, so I just got back this afternoon, some edits from legal counsel that I will be incorporating. And I, my goal is to have it online ASAP. If I'm not interrupted all day tomorrow, it will be tomorrow. Um, that's the plan. If not, it won't be, but as soon as I can. Um, and then the only other two things we need to talk about with regard to the warrant. Would be, Capitol just met. And they. Are recommended. Purchasing the fire truck this year out of mitigation funding. Because of the fifteen to twenty percent increase that will come down if we wait until FY twenty five. Because it's a two-year build out and there are emission standards that are changing in twenty seven that are substantially more expensive. So the recommendation of the fire chief to the Capitol Committee was to fund it in twenty four if at all possible. There is currently, um, the quote is for eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. There is currently eight hundred and fifty seven thousand in mitigation funding with a outstanding invoice to Highland Commons. For over six hundred thousand dollars. There is two hundred and sixty two dollars slated to go into. Um, uh, police in as part of the budget and that is annual. But we have two more River Bridge payments of a hundred thousand and the Highland Commons payment is in perpetuity. And grows based on the CPI rate every year, so.
We can can only spend what we actually have in the bank, though.
Right.
Right, like having an invoice out, having someone playing and paying someone, we can't vote at town meeting for some of the money that we expect to get.
Right.
Right, so, I I know, sorry, I wasn't quite finished. Um, so we have the difference if we wanted to put it forth in free cash to hold the difference until we get it. I'm hoping we'll have the Highland Commons check by town meeting. If not, um, we could hold it the. You know, we only would pay what we can upfront, which is a maximum of a third. The rest would be due on delivery of the equipment, which is a twenty month approximately, um, build out.
I don't believe that the. Check from Highland Commons has been late. Uh, since at least I've been on the board. It's always come before town meeting.
So they recommended that tonight and wanted me to put that before you. That would require reopening the warrant. So that would have to be on a posted meeting agenda, but if you're adding a special ed article. Um, for the schools, you would have to reopen the warrant anyways.
I, it's, it's our warrant, can't we just add it?
We have to announce that we're gonna, we have to announce to add reopening of the warranty and closing of the warrant. And so we can, we have to, and it has to be on a public agenda that we are opening it, so we have to announce that we're opening it like next Monday at. Five o'clock and closing it at our meeting at the nine o'clock next Monday or something.
That there was, there was a question last week brought up by FinCom, uh, when Kristen was going over the warrant with them. And it was around the senior work off and. I think there's like twenty thousand or so put aside to support that, and the question was how much of that is actually being used? And the response was around nine thousand, so, um, FinCom was just asking the question of. It's not even half used. Do we really need to do anything? And as they continued to look through the requirements for senior work off, again, it was just another question that came up. There's nothing in there about, um, an income requirement, you know, so if. I'm making five hundred thousand dollars a year and I'm retired and Sally's making forty. Could I be allowed to get senior work off versus someone who might really need it?
Yeah, but if we're not using up all the money, isn't both of them able to do it? I mean.
Yes, both of them are able to do it, but I'm saying in a case where if. If we're, if we've used up all the money, do you put any type of income requirement to say? Yes, you need to be over sixty. Yes, you need to live here for X amount of years. Yes, you need to have an income requirement of. Lower than forty thousand a year or something like that. That was the question. I took it down as a note. And put it in my notebook to ask tonight. That's all.
In my opinion, I would say no, but because that's, because Sally's gonna pay less than taxes. And for her home than the other person.
I also think to someone making half a million dollars a year, the the minimum wage might not be something they're willing to work for. But if we have an income verification program with it, we have to know the income of the people working for us, so that adds administrative overhead to the project. And I think you just try to keep it relatively simple, right?
Yeah, I have to see legally we can do that.
On the fire truck, I, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was gonna say, I, that's all I wanted was just to pass it along.
For a fire truck, I I worry as a green community that we're trying to buy a truck before it actually meets good environmental standards. That that we are trying to sneak this in, and I get that adding sort of admission standards and making it sort of, but that that. Buying it fast so that if we have something that pollutes more, just doesn't feel green communities to me.
Long as there's no PFAS on the, on the truck.
Yeah, but it's no different than than getting the taco in. That's not a green vehicle, so. What did we benefit with that, with with the taco coming in? We benefited, it was free, thank you, but. What did it do for our green community? Nothing.
And how much would we save between one year and the next, Kristen?
Uh, well, there's gonna be the cost of inflation, which we don't know what that is, but eighty eight thousand, if it's twenty percent is another. Hundred and seventy six thousand dollars.
So you're talking a million plus for a truck.
Yep. Plus whatever.
And then you're also waiting, yeah. And then you're also waiting because we've waited to buy it.
Yep.
And and then do we have to open the warrant for that? Because it's part of the capital plan, the capital plan is on the warrant. Adding a line to their spreadsheet shouldn't require us to reopen the warrant.
Um, it's because it would be appropriating public safety mitigation funding, so it would have to be an article for that, cause their funding is free cash.
I thought capital was whatever funding source they decide they want, cause we've done capital under stabilization and. We've done almost every year, we bought, we bought police cars under, under public safety.
Right, they they can make recommendations on it. Um, my understanding is the mitigation funding is its own article. So I I can check with June on that.
Uh, I I have not seen that in previously, that it is a capital plan that lists their various funding sources. So their chart usually is, you know, department, item, amount and source.
Okay. I have to say that I've never worked with mitigation funding before. This is a novel thing for me, so I'll check on that.
Uh, but it does sound like we'll put the fire engine in then, and whether or not we have to do another, open the articles or not, we we can.
Just do it next Monday night.
I did have the opportunity to meet with Barry today, um, just to go through the warrant. And so I will be coming out with a newer version, which as soon as I've incorporated the legal changes can go up on the website. Um, so folks can start looking at it and we'll blast that out through social media. We'll get some copies around here, um, if folks wanna pick them up. And, um, just start trying to get that information into people's hands as quickly as we can.
And Mary wants to like use her creativitiness and come up with a couple, uh. Eight by elevens, I'd be happy to take him and like go tape him down at general store, nineteen Kada, library. Our front door, not our front door, but town front door, anywhere where you can find people. Just to get it out there.
I mean, these are drafts right now, but, um, you know, I I've got draft all over it, so as long as people understand it's subject to change. At least they get, start to get an idea and they can start to ask questions.
Chris, Peggy, do you have any changes or questions or comments about any of the articles?
No, no, it's just a question I had on senior work off, but we're good.
Twenty eight will be one of the shorter. Articles we've had for a while, which is nice. Might make up for one that might be big. Um, okay, so, uh, by Thursday, Kristen, we do agenda setting, we can see whether or not we need to do anything with the warrant. We definitely will have to have a meeting to just do our final, the budget has to be finalized next week, just. We have to get this out to people.
Maybe we can talk strategy too on Wednesday night.
Are ready for the next agenda article? Our article, agenda item. Uh, L S, LSP testing options and solutions.
I thought it was a good report, um, Kristen.
Those, thank you, it's about two months worth of work and a lot of demonstrations.
Yep.
Um, I tried to kind of put it together in somewhat of a chronological order. There's no simple answer, um, to be perfectly honest. Um, Weston and Sampson were brought in because the town wanted to have additional oversight. Um, into reviewing the soil packages that were being put forth by the Maplewood Licensed Site Professional. And I asked Weston and Sampson for some data on how complete and those packages have been. And how many were approved or rejected? So just for the public's knowledge, there have been ninety seven soil packages for Maplewood Farms submitted to Weston and Sampson for review. Since the beginning of that administrative consent order. Um, six were rejected outright, six were partially rejected, and thirty three percent needed additional information for approval. They did clarify that that additional information was not minor changes, like a table or letter revision. That was actually additional information required for the approval. So almost fifty percent of the profiles required additional information in order to be. Either rejected outright or in part, or approved. So I, the way I see it, the town has three options moving forward. They can continue to have Weston and Sampson review. All of the soil packages that are submitted by Maplewood Farms Licensed Site Professional. That comes at quite a cost. Um, I can tell you, since, uh, this started, Weston and Sampson. Has been paid approximately a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars, including fourteen thousand so far and just FY twenty three. And they are speeding up the number of truck deliveries as you, as we've heard, um, in attempt to get the project done. But that does come at a higher cost. We had one invoice, I think it was January. Um, or February, whichever month, there was a lot of truck traffic. We had a thirty four hundred dollar invoice because it's based on, you know, the each profile that they review. Uh, we could do some type of random check where they review them at random, once per quarter, once every other month, once a month. Um, or we could stop checks because there are two licensed site professionals reviewing it, although they are paid. Through Lighthouse Environmental, which is retained, the firm retained by Maple, um, Wood Farms. They are licensed site professionals. They do report to the Department of Environmental Protection and they are putting their licenses on the line. Um, I don't know that I feel comfortable completely stopping though, given how incomplete the packages have been. So I would recommend we either continue to do it, even though it's costly, or we come up with some type of a random. Bi-monthly quarterly check.
Like, I think we need to think about the residents and how, how they'll feel, um, if we stop completely. Um, I I I think there will be some very unhappy people, particularly if then they end up with, um, water that's. Could, you know. Got commit chemicals or something in it from the the stuff they're bringing up there.
So, Kristen, I have several questions. Um, uh, the first one being the, uh, purpose. Of the whole soil import, uh, importation, I've heard. Used to ride horses, I've heard parking, I've heard hayfields, I've heard pasture. Does anybody know what the original intent was that was listed on that and has it changed over the years? And if it has, does that make an impact on the amount of soil?
Nope, um, the soil, so it falls under agricultural exemption, um, or agricultural use rather. Um, the stated purposes to terrace and shape, um, the back eight acres of the farm so that they can use it to ride horses. Um, and it doesn't have a time limit or a soil volume limit. It has to do with a height. A grade limit of three percent, which is required to get the, um, area filled in and terraced.
If we make any modifications to this, will it impact the original lawsuit in any way? What we agreed to do, I mean, we agreed to pay for it and then we say, no, we're not gonna pay for it or we're only gonna pay for half of it. Should we be worried about changing whatever the settlement was on this?
I don't think Weston and Sampson, that part was included in the settlement, was it?
No, so because of the settlement, we brought Weston and Sampson, DEP asked that the town, um, be involved in the administrative consent order. So, um, that had nothing to do, there was nothing outlined about Weston and Sampson or a third party review in the settlement itself. This had to do with the administrative consent order that that they entered into voluntarily with DEP.
Well, we were doing Weston and Sampson, I believe, even before the ACO.
And you can, yeah, um, that's at the town's discretion, whether or not they want to continue. It's not a requirement.
No.
So kind of piggybacking on Chris's statement of a a couple minutes ago about residents not being happy if something happens. Um, do we need to bring con- conservation into this discussion? They may have, cause I know that they randomly go up and look, I don't know what they do. All I heard is we go up and it's fine. And I'm thinking they may have a vested interest in, you know, options one, two and three.
Can certainly ask, um, I mean, the, in terms of like, co- environmental issues. That's what gets handled by the third party investigator. They check the, um, erosion controls, water management. They have to test soil loads at least twice a quarter. Um, and they have to monitor what's being brought in, what the characteristics are of it. I don't know unless there was some type of violation identified, um, that conservation would really have a role.
Right, and that's, but I wanted to ask because I didn't want us to do anything and then all of a sudden conservation stands up and says. Hey, you forgot about us, you know, we insert comment here.
I'd be happy to reach out to Carolyn and send her this and just ask if she's got any, you know, feedback on it or if conservation is involved. I can definitely do that.
And if we go with option two, which are your random checks, what is the cost savings to the town ish?
Depends on what we want to do, so, um, the cost comes out to, let's see, so what are we out per month? If it's fourteen. So we're at fourteen grand so far. It it's hard to say because it really depends on how. Big the soil packages are and how many come in per month. Um, you could have a month where you have none, you could have a month where you have seven. Um, it takes more time if the packages are incomplete and we get charged more for that. Uh, so. I I mean, if we do it, I would say our bills range anywhere from on the low end of twelve hundred to the high end of thirty five hundred per month.
You know, if if we're only gonna save a dollar and six cents, you know, a a lower amount, is it really worth it to make any changes? And what is that? And what is that savings? What is that return on investment amount that we are looking potentially? To get.
So we've had to go to, um, we put aside twenty thousand for consulting annually. And that pretty much all goes to Maplewood this year. Um, some of it went to M R I for the executive recruitments. But if you look at the fact that we're at fourteen thousand already through February. Um, I am concerned that I may have to go for an, a reserve fund transfer. So if we were to cut that back, we could stay within the twenty grand and not have to go for more.
I, I was actually surprised at the total amount of money that we have spent because it's been quite a few years. Hmm, I didn't think it was high. I thought, I didn't think it was, I mean, I thought it would be higher.
Me too.
There wasn't as much spent, so there's been fits and starts. And um, part of the reason why this has taken, this isn't, it isn't so expensive is because it has taken so long. So. This was according to the Johnsons pitched as a three-year project, but it has dragged on because of the initial stop work order. The lawsuit, the A C O, COVID, um, they argue that. Um, the four-day turnaround time permitted for us has lost them soil loads. Because it's a highly competitive market that usually requires a forty-eight hour turnaround. Um, Weston and Sampson have sped that up and they. Slightly dispute um, that that really is the case. Um, because they say there's a huge market out there for this because there aren't that many sites out there that are like this. So. It, it kind of all depends on who you talk to. It's, it's, but it really shouldn't have taken this long. So that's, I think we're going to see more costs in the next couple of years because they're trying to get it done. They're only halfway done. So you figure if that's a hundred and twenty-six grand for halfway done. Are we going to see another, and it's twenty-four months? So are we going to see another hundred grand in the next two years? That would be highly problematic.
So how does this play into the earthwork bylog that has been kind of hanging for a year with no movement?
It doesn't, um, actually, because this is just a project that we have no control over outside of the administrative consent order. Um, the town initially tried to stop it, which is what caused the lawsuit. Um, we can't ban soil importation. We can only regulate. Testing hours, truck routes. Um, it is basically as long as it is of, of similar soil. Meaning their concentrations uh, do, are do not rise to contamination levels. Um, they are legally permitted by state law to do it. It is a problem that a lot of cities and towns are facing. We are, we are not alone. Um, it is, it is um, a very contentious issue.
Maybe this is something we need to get some feedback from the public on. Maybe by way of a coffee talk, I, you know, my, my motion tonight would have been to have no changes. And then perhaps do a coffee talk maybe after May, you know, and see whether. Um, you know, we can get some feedback. You know, we shared, share the numbers and, and share, you know, what the possibilities are even if. You know, something wrong uh, would, something would go wrong.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that the butters up and down Linden would probably be your bigger voice. That would come into play because it's going to be their land that if anything happens would suffer.
Are they the ones that would be just like lower than Maplewood? Is that what you're saying?
That, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So where like Linden goes up and Ball Hill goes this way. Probably anything that comes, I don't know how far it would come down, at least probably halfway. Down Linden, I'm going to assume maybe by Ford's property, that's a guess. I mean, there's water and. Little ponds all the way through when you come down the back way of Piska, so.
Right, and it feeds into Northbrook. And Asavet, and then Asavet after that.
Yep, I mean, and it goes right into.
Right, which, which is why I think I'm also just, uh, no change. I think the cost of a bad package getting through. You know, and, and I don't believe Maplewood is planning on bringing in any bad packages and, but, but you know, sometimes. Things get by them too, and I don't, I don't think we can afford, I, I don't think we can afford an environmental hazard, which would cost us way more than a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And so I, I think that despite the fact there's a lot of traffic, despite the fact of some cost, I think we. We, 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 we are, we are on this train and this train has been going for ten years. We, we gotta ride it to its end.
I think it was worth looking into, given the.
Oh, I definitely.
But um, I, I, I tend to agree with all three of you. Um, I just, that fifty percent number makes me very uncomfortable.
And, and it was good for you. I mean, Kristen, as far as being back at the history. And maybe we're spot and peg, you know, uh, you know, looking at the history of all of it. I thought it was really interesting.
This was the clearest summary I think I've gotten on that whole project in, in years. And so I, I, I think it was very enlightening. I think it is very clear. I think when, when people ask questions about it now, I'll feel in a better position to, to answer them. I, I. No, I think this is a very worthwhile exercise, even if there is, the result is we're not going to make a change. I at least now know why we're not making a change. I know what the cost we're looking at. Again, I think this is a great exercise to go through.
Now, and if anything, maybe it's something that can go up somewhere in uh, on our town website too, so. You can reference it, you know, in the state that it is, not in the state that it is, maybe with some additional information, but again, if people want to know. We can send them and then have a chat.
So I'll make a motion to vote no change on the um, L S P. Options.
One second.
Uh, and I think we've had our discussion, so Hawkins, I.
Keith, bye.
Stone, I.
And then we want something, it's something that we can always bring up again if we feel necessary.
Absolutely, and it is on D E P's radar and um, I have the attention of the district director. She has encouraged me, if people have questions, concerns, bring it to her attention, bring it to D E P's attention, bring it to the town's attention. We'll bring it to D E P.
Right.
Uh, new business, uh, the Neshoba Valley Regional Dispatch District Agreement.
Yes, so it is time to enter into a new agreement with Neshoba Valley Regional Dispatch. Um, I actually am now the chair of the admin board that. Sort of by default.
I was on it, Kristen, they didn't want a select person. That's why Berlin never got it until Margaret came and now you've got it.
You should have stayed on, Chris. Um, yeah, no, they basically went through the history and said, tag, you're it. Um, so uh, now I'm chair, but uh, the admin committee basically oversees the executive director. Um, and the functions, there's the town administrators, um, or assistant town administrators from all the towns sit on this. Uh, from the member communities, which are Berlin, Bolton, Harvard, Lancaster and Lunenburg. We did lose Townsend. Um, looking for another community hopefully to join, but in the meantime, state has actually been filling in their portion of the funding. So that's at least somewhat helpful. Uh, you have in your file, the changes, this has been voted unanimously by the admin. Board. There are very minor changes. I believe they're all sort of administrative operational clarifications to the agreement. That make it more functional um, and, and more clear. Um, and obviously they give us an annual assessment, much like Asavet, every time it comes to budget uh, time. So the term of this agreement would be July one twenty-three through June thirty of twenty-four. And it automatically renews for additional terms of one year up to twenty-five years. Or until terminated by mutual agreement, subsequent agreement, et cetera.
Can I ask, can I ask um, when the other towns are going to have it voted by their select board?
So Harvard's already had it voted. Bolton had it voted. Tonight, I believe they're vot- voting it.
Good.
Um, Lancaster is running a little late. They've had a lot going on. And Kate wasn't at the last meeting, but basically all of them within the next couple of weeks.
That's great. I, I, you know, when they kept talking about doing this, they were all afraid of bringing it to their boards. And I said, why?
It's pretty straightforward, I'll be honest. Um, and I have to say, Anne Camaro is doing an outstanding job. Uh, we go over the budget every meeting, um, we do goals. She, um, she, she's a, she's a gem. She really knows what she's doing.
Gonna hang on to that one, huh?
Oh, yeah.
So.
So.
You guys, no, I was just gonna say, do you have questions or, all right, then ask your questions first, I guess, because I was gonna make a motion.
So, um, again, and maybe just for further explanation, so on number ten. It says the district will be responsible for maintaining and purchasing its systems and equipment. Maybe they just didn't listen here. Is there a listing of what they're actually purchasing? Because it kind of rolls into my next question of number eleven, which basically says, hey. Everybody that's, you know, every community that's participating, you know, you gotta buy all this stuff. You know, we're not going to give you any money, but you gotta buy this stuff. So I'm just curious what the district is purchasing versus what. Each community is purchasing and if a community purchases. I'm going to look down and randomly grab one, a two-way radio, but the district failed to maintain. Whatever system they bought, which caused our system to fail. Who pays for what?
It's a really good question, especially in light of the ra- the radio project we're putting out for funding. Um, so the district is responsible for all of its dispatching equipment and systems that are in Devon's. And um, I can tell you that they are all pretty much new state of the art. Uh, they also have some systems in the building that they're responsible for, like the H VAC system, even though, which is an interesting. Case we're dealing with, even though they're leased. Um, there are certain building systems that they're responsible for maintaining. Which is a bit unusual, but that's how the lease was issued. Um, in terms of the community infrastructure, that is all on us. Um, I will tell you right now, the reason we have issues with dispatch is our equipment, not theirs. Um, and basically I don't see it ever going the other way. Because they basically put a budget together with sufficient funding from the member communities so that they can maintain and keep. Their equipment. Um, it's, it's not an inexpensive operation, I will tell you, but it's a very effective. Um, operation. So part of it is getting our stuff up to speed so that we can tie in with them and be able to work with their equipment.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Thanks.
Sure.
Would you like a motion, Scott? You look like, oh, you're muted.
He's good.
Go for it. Sorry, I had some noise in the background.
Okay, uh, me too, barking dogs. Um, so I would make a motion to. Approve the Neshoba Valley Regional Dispatch District Agreement.
I'll second.
Uh, I think we've had our discussion, so Hawkins, I.
Keith, bye.
Uh, the next item is to discuss and vote at, to sign at F A letters to support for drones.
Yes, so this is really funny and it actually reminds me of the time we had to prove how old we were as a business in order to get a credit card from a bank. Um, it's very similar. We have to prove that we are a town and when we were incorporated. And that the Berlin Police Department is a law enforcement agency and that uh, the town of Berlin is a political subdivision. And that the Berlin Police Department intends to use the drone um, in accordance with all F A A regulations. Um, this is a letter that is basically, we stole, I'm not going to lie, of the template. From two other communities that have done this. Um, and the point is so that basically we can get our F A A. Authorization to fly the drone in emergency situations.
A letter look, find to me, and I think we're going to authorize the chair to sign.
Yes.
So I would make a motion to, um. Sign the F A A letter, have the chair sign the F A A letters of support for the drone.
Second.
Uh, makes sort of sense to me, Hawkins, I.
Keith, bye.
Stone, I.
And I have to give kudos to Mary again here for locating the Articles of Incorporating Berlin as a Town from February sixth of eighteen twelve. We are legit.
Woo-hoo.
Uh, for not a town that we're, we, I don't know what we're doing on Mondays, but glad to know we're a town. All right, it's weird that we have to prove it. Um.
It is.
Uh, next item then is uh, uh, board questions, comments, layers on updates. Uh, Chris?
I think I'm all set.
I, I'm all set, uh, as well, Peg.
And I got four. Um, in room two twenty-six, we're going to be meeting on Wednesday. There's a bunch of junk in the back room, a broken desk with broken wheels, a ripped seat, a base of something that I have no idea what it is. Can we get rid of it? Cause it just looks junky. And again, I know Fred's busy, um, you know, uh, but it, that's been sitting there since the infamous. Three cabinets that showed up filled with, you know, acorn shells were in the back, so uh, if we can, we can get rid of that, that would be awesome.
Um, girls needed seats, Peg.
They did need seats and they obviously they can't come back because they ripped the seats, so they must be banished from the building. Um, finally caught up with Sandra an email regarding some of the minor cleanup at eighteen seventy. Kristi, you've been copied, so the plan in place is that she was in agreement. So for a quick review, um. If you walk into the town hall and go in the room that we used to meet, that we had coffee talk in down on the first floor. There's like a small cubby hole under the stairs. When you open that cubby hole, there's paint. Uh, there's tarps, there's other paint paraphernalia, there's a lamp, there's a mirror. So I have asked Historical to come peek in there with me and make sure that it's nothing historical. Um, and if it's not. Then I'll kindly label it trash and you know, that takes care of that one. There's a whole method to the madness. So we get that area cleaned out. We walked backwards coming into the building where the old police station was. Uh, again, there's a broken desk in there. You can't, you know, the drawer opens, it falls apart and stuff. Um, I'd like historic, there's like an old. Cardboard map thing that I don't know why we're keeping it. I think it's just old. I don't know if it's antique, not up for me to decide. So I've asked uh, June Miller and Janet Woodward to look at those items with me. And then take it back to their board to say, this is old and it's broken and it can go, or hey, this is good. Um, so either leave it or drag it across into Memorial Hall that they've locked that no one can get into. Just to clean out that area because here's where the madness comes in. If you go up, see us to the second floor in the hall and the cabinet. And a closet that's all the way in the back, uh, rec has their stuff in there. There's also a bunch of Christmas decorations that haven't been used in a number of years. So the thought is if we can bring the Christmas decorations that are all in boxes and bags downstairs and put them underneath. They'll be more accessible because otherwise you're climbing a ladder to pull that down and you'd need two or three people. Uh, you know, just for safety's sake. So get rid of that, that opens up some of the room. Uh, maybe for additional rec stuff that they have. And then by cleaning the bottom room out. Uh, Sandra had mentioned that there's a couple of times when there's performances that people need an area to change. Well, if we can clean out the rooms downstairs, then you have an area for people to change. You know, you can put them in the back room in her. Office, so it kind of, you know, serves a couple purposes and plus two, one of the uh, groups, the wood turning. Group, they pay to use the town hall, so in there looking for extra space, I don't know how much extra space, you know. So maybe by cleaning this to move this, to move this, to empty this, to throw this out, it gives them a little bit of room. So um, I'm just going to show and point to Janet and June and then they will bring it back to Historical to say, yes, no, keep trash. And then once we have a decision, I'll send a formal note uh, request back to Kristen and Fred to say when you can, you know. I've labeled everything with a yellow sticky that will say trash, um, you know, for them to get out so that we can start the movement. Of that. Um.
It sounds like a date. Is this a dated date? Is this a.
It is, everything's kind of like in a phase.
Sort of a responsibility.
It is, everything's like a bit of a phase, you know, we gotta clean out the bottom to bring some of the stuff down. We gotta clean out that stuff to give some more room. So, you know, I can't say, oh, by next Tuesday. to bring some of the stuff down. We gotta clean out that stuff to give some more room. So, you know, I can't say, oh, by next Tuesday, it'll be all done. It'll be, if they say this, then we can take care of this if they say this, so. It's not going to be resolved.
No, I, I just didn't know whether you needed to do it, Peg. This is something you need to do.
Well, it's one of those things that lack of storage has been a pet peeve of mine. And I'm okay with, with taking it on because it really is just a little bit of time, uh, to do that. And you know what? If we can make a little bit of improvement and make a couple committees happy, then next time when we look at more storage space, we go a little bit bigger and make a few more people happy. We go a little bit bigger and make a few more people happy. So it's a very small phased approach thought process. I'm okay with doing it, um, you know, not a big deal. I did send a note to John Asabet guy about signs. I haven't heard from him, so ponder about this thought. I don't know if it'll look pretty. I don't know if it'll look ugly. I don't know if we can do it. You know those plastic signs that you stick a piece of paper in that like sit on a desk? You know, it's like a little plastic thing with a stand on it. If we really want signs, can we, and tell me I'm crazy, I'm fine with that. Take those plastic sign holders. Paint them black or maybe not just paint them black, but and Fred would probably know the answer to this. Could they be screwed into the walls, you know, up there? And then we make just a sign, we just print a sign, you know, white on black that says assessor, you know, uh, accountant. So if anybody moves, then we're just truly like pulling the piece of paper out and sticking a new paper in. I don't know if John's lost interest in this. I don't know if he doesn't have time. Again, there was always the cost consideration, Chris, that you had from a few months ago. You know, buying a handful of plastic things and maybe put it, or maybe we put one up and see what it looks like and go, oh dear God, it's ugly as sin. And not do it, but. I don't know, I mean.
Twenty-month money on it, so even if it's ugly as sin.
It's ugly as sin, we're only going to spend like a buck and a quarter to pick it up. I don't, I don't know. But I'm thinking if we want signs and we're not getting what we had hoped or maybe not have the money to do so, then we kind of go with plan B and see if that works. Then at least, you know, the sign is sticking out from the wall. So when you're coming down the hall, you're gonna be able to see it, you know, and they're up high enough so that people aren't walking into it and things like that. I don't know, just a thought. And since we're meeting on Wednesday with finance, can we think about going back in person? Cause I know that the, oh, what was I looking at this weekend? The positivity rate has dropped eight percent in the past like fourteen days and the number of cases has gone down twenty-one percent, so.
Well, I was planning on it the, after the end of March.
All right, then I'm not going to ask anymore. All right, you heard it here, folks. I'm going to be back in public next week, two weeks.
Scott's on board too.
I've always been willing to support whoever the most sort of cautious person is. And so if, Chris, you're ready, I think we're ready sort of in April then.
Sweet. And obviously we'll keep an eye on it. If
We obviously.
Positivity rate goes up and, you know, funky things happen in town, absolutely, safety first. But if the numbers are on our side. It's much more fun to argue in public, in, in person.
As we said, you know, or as I said, um, to our senator and our rep though. I do think that this is a good part of the open meeting law. And I do hope that, you know, we will be able to use this venue if necessary.
Well, and I, I'm looking forward to, we're, we're trying to do the hybrid stuff where we can get the bu- best of both, where we can sort of be in person. But I, I still point out that our attendance at Zoom select board meetings has been significantly higher than it ever was in person. And it's much easier to get, it's much easier to get a guest speaker or presenter to show up if they're only really have to commit fifteen or twenty minutes of their night than not a couple of hours.
Yeah, and, and I, that was been my, one of my things all along was that I don't want to, I don't want to go back to in-person when you do have the better audience on Zoom. Unless we can do it properly through hybrid.
I think I have a solution. Uh, stay tuned. That is the cable upgrades we're working on.
Hope it's, I hope it's something that will work. That's, that'd be terrific.
I mean, think about it, if we go back next month, you've got April and May and then what, June? So end of June, we start to swing into like summer every other week. So if anything, this is probably a good time to try and get back. And then who knows, maybe by the time September rolls around and we're ready to roll. Kristen, you'll be good to go with your thing and we'll be in the back room playing with the monitors and, and get people on in hybrid and people able to call in, so.
Um, procedural question on the April, um, I have not done an in-person meeting with you all. Do you bring your laptops or do you do?
You're required to bring snacks, drinks, pillows.
Margarita, no kidding.
No, we never did. I don't think we ever used, we only had one member that used a laptop.
Yeah, but remember too, we went through a crap ton of paper that Mary printed out for us. So you know what? It just might be easier for the three of us to show up.
Why show up in person if you're going to have a laptop in front of you?
I'm gonna have a laptop, right, because that's how I process things better, but.
Uh, well, how about this? Just let me know if you want hard copies and we'll print them out. How's that?
I, I usually print them out at home anyway, so.
And I, I do everything off my laptop as well. I flip around screens, so.
So it'll be an adjustment.
It will. It'll be weird to meet again. Well, hey, we'll use Wednesday as our dry run.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Stone gun.
So, uh, would you like a motion, Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Uh, I don't think we're going to debate that. Uh, Hawkins, I.
Keith, bye.
Stone, I.